Hello everyone, good evening. Thank you for coming out to our first town hall meeting. So, this is a collaboration between FPA Foundation, Forcing Progressive Advocacy, and C W A P, Child Welfare Organizing Project. We have come together because we both are here on behalf of youths in the foster care system and parents affected by ACS in the foster care system. And we need to start having these types of dialogues so that people can understand that it's not just JCCA or Edwin Gould or Children's Village or Harlem Dallying, but it's really all the agencies and families need to know what their rights are. Families need to know that many individuals have been affected by ACS in foster care and there are steps that you can take to protect yourself. And this is going to be the beginning of those types of discussions. We really want families, people in the community, our church leaders, our pastors, our school leaders, people in the community that have been affected or even have not been affected to come forward and to join us in this movement. In order for us to change what's happening and how our families are being affected, how they're being torn apart, in order to restore our families, we need all of the people involved in our communities to step up and to help us to restore our families. So, we need to restore our families, the black and Hispanic families. We need to make sure that we're strengthening our communities. We need to make sure that our children are getting the best education that they can possibly receive. We need to ensure that youths that are aging out of foster care are not becoming homeless. We need to also make sure that parents know that they have a voice, that they have rights, and that they can fight against the system, that they need no longer feel intimidated, they need no longer feel isolated, and they need to feel strengthened. But with strength comes numbers. With numbers come voices, and with voices comes movement.
So, good evening. My name is Sandra Collette. I'm the Executive Director of Child Welfare Organizing Project, and I come with you this evening in collaboration with Forcing Progressive Advocacy. Tonight, you will hear from parents affected by the child welfare system, you will hear from a youth affected by the child welfare system, and you will hear from a former worker of the child welfare system. We do have one guest who is not here, but he would speak to the psychotropic medication, over-medication of children in the foster care system. That is a voice also that is unheard. I can only go back and reiterate what Ms. Hooper has said to you this evening. I know it's important that we, those who have been affected, are raising our voices about the system, but I believe it goes beyond that. If we are going to transform this system, we must change the discourse about who we are as parents, who we are as youth affected by the system, as well as foster parents affected by the system. Because once you get that knock on the door, there is no title that says "parent" or "foster parent." You just simply get that knock on the door. So, what I'm saying to you is that disproportionately across New York City and all jurisdictions, people of color are disproportionately represented in the child welfare system. And there is something to be said about that. So, again, we're asking that you mobilize, that you raise your voice with us, and that you help us to transform a system that is traumatizing families over and over again. And that is true in what you see with the homeless youth, what you see with youth who are involved in the juvenile justice system and the criminal justice system. There is actual research that shows that children that have been affected by the foster care system are more likely to be involved with the juvenile justice system, the criminal justice system, and to become homeless. So, with that being said, I am going to introduce you to the panel at hand. I will start with William Pratt.
Can we give them a lot of applause?
DeShawn Johnson and... I'm not going to share, but I hesitated in saying Johnson, and you'll know why when you hear DeShawn speak. And right next to him is his mother, and I was going to say mom, but his mother, his mom, Ms. Janelle Johnson. So, the order of seating, I always like to start with the youth, but of course, we're going to do that if DeShawn would like to start. If not, we'll start with Mr. Pratt. It's totally up to you, whatever you're comfortable with.
That's fine.
Okay, fine. And thanks, everyone, for coming out.
My name is DeShawn. I was taken from my mom to place in care at nine days old. I dreamed my whole life to know what my mom's face looked like or hear her voice. When I was 18, I was reunited with her by my adoptive mother, so it's been seven months now. I'm a person affected by the system. Legally, my name is DeShawn Bramma. I was born DeShawn Tyree Johnson. I was born DeShawn Tyree Johnson. At nine days old, I was removed from my mother for neglect, but I never even went home with her. A group of people decided my mother was unfit to raise me prior to my birth. I know this because my adoptive mother told me, she got a call asking if she wanted to take a baby boy that would be born in June. How can one determine if my mom is fit to raise me if she never given the opportunity to do so? These people who I've never seen or spoken to changed the course of my life forever. My mom was unfit to raise me, but a stranger was. To me, this is a grave injustice and one example of inequality in the system. Another is how vast majority of children placed in the system are people of color. To me, this is a legal, modern-day slave trade. Remove the child from their families, make it almost impossible to gain any knowledge of their bloodline until they're legally adults. Change our names and tell us this is our new family. When or if we reunite with our families, it's an overwhelming state of emotions. Our biological and adoptive families... Oh, excuse me. Between our biological and adoptive families, with the adoptive child almost always calling them. At 18, when our adoption records were made available to us, at a time when we should be focused on building ourselves and becoming successful young adults, we're focused on adoption reunification, which is definitely a major part in any adoptive's life at any age. I feel that parents should be given a trial period with the removed child at some point, rather than ripping us from our bloodlines and giving us a false identity. In 1860, Abraham Lincoln said, "A house divided cannot stand strong." Our families are being divided and unable to stand strong because of the same system set in place to ensure the welfare of children. Something needs to change.
So, DeShawn, just let me ask you quickly, what do you think needs to change? You might need to stand up. Yeah, wait. No, no, just give you. I just want to ask you. So, DeShawn, I just want to ask you, what do you think needs to change? What do you think would have made this situation different to you and your mom?
I think I should have been given a chance to do it at some point, rather than when I'm 18. Because last time I saw her, I was 18 months old. I met her after my 18th birthday, after I graduated high school. To me, that's unfair, because you never got a chance.
And you never got a chance as well?
Never. Not in mine, my sister's, my mother, anyone.
So, do you think this affects a certain people, people who had your mom very young when she gave birth to you?
Of course, it affects my siblings, myself, parental state, the rest of my family, even my adoptive family, because they don't know what's expected of me, because they don't know where I come from. I don't know where I come from.
Okay. Thank you. Your side. Oh, sorry. My name is Joyce Mill, and I will be moderator tonight. And next, we're going to speak to Mr. William Pratt, who has been affected by the system as a foster care child. He has also worked for ACS as a preventive worker, and in addition to that, his children were placed in the system and he is a single dad.
Good evening.
Good evening.
DeShawn, I can relate. My name's William Pratt. When I was born, I knew that my name was Taylor. I saw a birth certificate once. I've never been able to retrieve that. I have siblings, I have a sister and brother, I don't know them. Last month, I turned 52. If my sister and brother were in this room, I wouldn't know them. I don't know what they look like, I don't know what they sound like, I don't know them. And truthfully, to me, they're just people that I can relate to. From foster care, I went to foster care when I was 11. I aged out in prison. And prison, for me, was just an extension of the group homes. Everybody who was in the group home was up north. We were all...
I placed myself in... And with house for girls, well, I placed myself in ACS, and I was told that they were working very hard to find a foster home that would accept me while I was pregnant. Today, I know that that's not the truth. When I placed myself in ACS care, they called his adoptive mother and they said, "We have a child that just came into care. She's pregnant. The baby is going to be born in June, and it's a boy. Do you want him?" I thought I was born to a foster home with my son. When I gave birth, there was nothing wrong with him, no drugs in my system. I walked out of the hospital, ACS sent a car for me, a car for him. He was taken right away. I visited with him for 18 months. My mom became involved, other family became involved. To this day, we have no idea how my son got adopted. We never went to court, we were never notified of a petition to terminate my parental rights, no other family members were explored as an option for placement. While my mother was sitting there visiting with the caseworker, no one ever thought to say anything regarding these court proceedings. Today, now, we know that he was adopted two years after his birth. It takes 18 to 24 months to do a TPR and an adoption, which means we didn't have a chance. Shortly after that, I kind of went insane, started using drugs, and another baby. Now, I was learning about addiction and recovery, and I was trying to stay clean like I was working the program. I relapsed in my ninth month, I took a hit in my work record. I held that baby in for two days, hoping I'd reach the third day and we'd both be clean so I could come home with a baby, but that didn't happen. I spent four years in family court, sober, clean, urine test, every court date, visitation, cleaning my life up, going to school, working. I was informed that based on his removal and termination of parental rights, I was not going to win this case. My rights were terminated. I gave birth to another child outside of state, came back to New York to continue working on my other children who were in care, my rights weren't terminated on. That child was removed due to domestic violence. Only three months after the new New York State law had been enacted that no child could be removed due to domestic violence, my daughter was removed. Although, I was assaulted downtown Manhattan, and she was uptown Manhattan in the daycare at the time of the assault. I said all of that to say, today, I know that my son's adoptive mother has been receiving checks for him his entire life. Today, I know that they called him before I even was anywhere near my seventh month. They called someone to take my son. Today, I know that the disproportionate amount of blacks and Latinos is not coincidence. When I was going through the system, there were no white kids in the group homes, I'm sorry. You know, I didn't see any Chinese kids, or it was blacks and Latinos, you know. I always knew it was about money, but I didn't know about how much money. Now, I know $2,300 a month goes to this woman for my son. I know that they got together as a family and took a vote and asked, "Should we keep him or get him back?" Where was I in all of this? There was a lot of services that I could have been given that I was not given. Me and my children could have been placed in a drug treatment program together, residentially. I could have been given a foster home when I had my first baby at 14 years old, or maybe even 15 years old. There were a lot of services that weren't offered to me or my family, and that's why I'm here for this cause. I was a homeless teenager, scared to go to ACS but couldn't go back home. Too much drugs at home, but the group home was worse. I didn't know what to do. I slept on the side of St. Vincent's Hospital through the winter, you know, until somebody from Housing Works came along and said, "I got to save a place for you." You know, once the system gets its grips on you, it gets its grips in your whole family. It started taking me from my mother. My mother is a wonderful mother. Awesome. There's no reason I should have been taken from my mother, none. And once they got me, they got all five of my children. And that's my story. Just a pause really quickly. Today, I am a mother to three of my children. They're all... They're all in college. And we're working on getting two home.
Wow, Janelle. That was an amazing story. Shocking for some who don't know how the system works. I have a question. Since you was a teenage mom, it sounds to me that you were set up for failure.
I guess.
Because you were never placed.
No.
Even though you were only 14 years old, you yourself were not placed. You were held, basically, in eyesight, not provided, until they could receive your baby after birth.
Pretty much. Pretty much. I mean, like I said, I go in, I don't remember being taken shopping, I don't remember being placed in the appropriate services. I remember this is where you're going to stay, that's your bed, and that was it.
So, you were running away. I'm assuming because you said your mom was a great mom, that means you was running away because you kind of wanted to have a patient. So, why were you removed from home?
Chilling.
Chilling?
Yes.
So...
For skipping school.
Educational neglect, they would refer to as.
I guess, but...
Did you get an education in care?
No. No.
That's kind of funny, right?
My high school rate completed was the eighth grade until I got my GED at 24 years old, and now I'm about to graduate with my bachelor's or something.
So, it sounds to me, from listening to my panelists, starting with you, William, children are removed from home to reasons that are not necessary. In addition, services are not provided for those children. They remove children for educational neglect, but don't provide an education.
Can I just add one thing that's very important? My son was told his entire life that he was a crack baby, and he was taken because he was born a crack baby. We had those... We got in touch with the clerk's office. It wasn't for charge. The charge was neglect. How was I smoking crack in a group home? I mean, you can't smoke crack in a group home. Not that I know of.
How was the group home? They did provide the things you needed inside the group home, or is it...
Enwood House Maternity Home for Girls was really good.
How about the other group homes? Were the...
Very nasty.
Were...
They didn't care. They didn't care. It's like, you're here, so what? I mean, my oldest daughter was in care for two years, and she went through the same exact thing I went through.
So, basically, it was just another location where some of the 20-something or...
It's like a shelter. It's like a big shelter. It's like being in jail. You know, I got my GED in jail, I got my business certificate in jail. I went from group homes to 21 and ended up in jail at 21, and came home at 23 and aged out of foster care.
So, it sounds like a lot of money's being spent, but it's not being spent on the children. So, hopefully, we'll turn this around, as long as you ban to jail, they keep the boots to the ground. It means march, give out flyers with us, and make people aware of what is happening. We need to turn this system upside down, because it's affecting our community. She said there were no white kids in her group home then. William, were there any white kids in your group home?
One.
One. How many black kids?
The whole... Everybody.
Everybody, right?
Everybody, all of them.
Disproportionate numbers. I would like to introduce Ms. Sylvia Hopper, who is one of the founders of FPA Foundation, which stands for Forcing Progressive Advocacy.
Hello, good evening. So, again, my name is Sylvia Hooper, FPA Foundation. I'm also a former foster youth, I'm a social worker, an activist, and an advocate. So, I'm just going to share a little bit about my story and my experience. So, I was born into the foster care system. My mother, I do not know her, do not know her name. She gave a facetious name when she gave birth to me at Albert Einstein Hospital in the 80s, and she told the hospital staff that she was going to be returning, and she left the hospital and never looked back. And so, fortunately, I was placed into a really fantastic foster home, and I'm so grateful that that was my first experience. And so, I had two really great parents who had been foster parents of many, many children, and so, they decided to take myself and my brother in, and they decided to adopt us. So, three years later, after going into foster care, I was adopted. However, the unfortunate part about my story is that at the age of 15, my adoptive mother passed away. And so, she passed away due to natural causes, because she was in her 70s. And so, my father was 81 when he passed away, and I was 19 years old. And so, it was a very traumatic situation, to say the least, because, you know, when you're a young person, you don't really consider the fact that you may lose your parents, or you may not have your family anymore, that you may be alone, that you may have to grow up a little quicker than other people. But a lot of children in foster care have to deal with those consequences. And they didn't ask for you placed into these situations, but this is what life has dealt them. And so, at the age of 15, myself and my brother, he was 12 at the time, we were placed into my father's, my adoptive father's relatives' home. So, it was considered kinship foster care, although me nor my brother had never met these family members. So, we moved upstate, and this was the only option that was given to us outside of going to a group home, because when the ACS caseworker came knocking on that door so politely and so gingerly and with so much empathy, as we all know they have, she said that we had to make a decision that would really change the course of our lives forever. So, because my father was dealing with Alzheimer's and dementia at that time, she said that we had two options. Either myself, my brother, and my father could move upstate and live with our relatives, or the two of us, my brother and I, would have to be split up and put into different group homes, and my father would be placed in a nursing home, or we had the other option. So, at the age of 15, I had to make that adult decision, and I made the decision to keep my family together. And so, we were schlepped upstate to Franklin, New York, a very small town, completely Caucasian. We were the only black family for miles and miles and miles, and still are. So, you know, I quickly began to realize that my aunt and uncle weren't really taking us in for altruistic reasons. They were completely about that subsidy check. They were all about renewing their home, you know, beautifying their, you know, garden and so forth, but not so much about my brother and I's care, not so much about talking about our grief, the trauma that we just experienced, you know, leaving the only home that we had known, leaving the only family that we had known, and really seeing our father deteriorate and, you know, really in his last final stages. And so, none of that could ever be talked about, none of that could ever be discussed. We weren't allowed to grieve, we weren't allowed to cry, we weren't allowed to talk about our mother. So, at that time, I really began to question, you know, who's the person that's supposed to be here for me? Who's the person that's supposed to be here to advocate for my brother and I? Where's this caseworker that's supposed to sit down and plan with us about our future, about college, about, you know, just how we're doing in general? I really felt very adamant about that, and I asked a lot of questions, of course, with no response, no return, no answers. But at that age, I began to say, "My education is going to be my savior." And so, I made sure that I stayed on the honor roll, I made sure that I applied to every college that I could for every scholarship, and I walked out of that graduation completely white school with the most scholarships and grants that anyone had ever had in that school history. And so, I was able to put myself in a position where I went on to college, and in college, I really began to think about what I wanted to do with my life, what was going to be my career path. And that's why I decided to work for ACS. So, I worked there for two years as a caseworker. Why I went into work for ACS is because I wanted to give families the experience that I didn't have when someone came to my door and came into my home and into my family. And so, I went into that particular work really going in with the mindset that I'm going to really help to change families, empower them, strengthen them, and that's what I did. And I was met with a lot of, just a lot of kickback, because the supervisors that I had always said, "Oh, Sylvia, you're young, and, you know, you don't know what you're doing," or, you know, "Once you've worked in this field for quite some time, you'll see that it's a revolving door." You'll see that there's parents that have had their children removed time and time again, and they don't deserve a chance. They don't deserve for someone to give them an opportunity. They don't deserve to have your time. And so, I really said to him, "I hope I never become you." And I said that to him, to his face, and so, I began my mission, my quest, of really being a whistleblower and really stepping up for families, stepping up for people. I reported my supervisor, I reported what was happening at ACS in the Bronzefields Office at 2501 Grand Concourse. And so, I began to have a name for myself. And then, you know, after some time, I said, "I need to move on from this." And so, I moved on to foster care, I worked in preventive, and when I worked at the foster care agencies where I met Doran Matthews, my co-founder, and we quickly began to realize that there was a lot of things unfolding at Children's Village, a foster care agency in Harlem. There was money being stilled in the agency, there was a lot of mismanagement of funds, there were children being placed at homes that people who shouldn't have had children in their homes. There was also a lot of foster allegations being called in against many, many parents, and they not knowing their rights, they not knowing how to advocate for themselves, not having the strength to speak up. So, as social workers, we felt that we had no choice but to make a complaint against this agency, but to report them to ACS, to report them to the mayor's office, to report them to the news. However, many people that worked in the agency, many parents, many, you know, just many individuals that knew what was going on felt that they could not come forward. They had a lot at stake, they felt intimidated by the system, and they were scared, to be quite honest, but we weren't scared. And so, we made it our mission and our course to start an organization, very small, very grassroots, but we've been around now for eight years. And the work that we have done have really impacted a lot of individuals, a lot of youths, a lot of parents, a lot of foster parents, that if had we not been around, you know, I don't really know where these families would be at this time, because we've really helped overturn a lot of the dirty work that's going on in the system, but a lot more work needs to be done. And that's why we really felt that it was important to have these town hall meetings, because we need to have these conversations, we need to have these dialogues. You know, they want to keep us isolated, they want to keep us not communicating with each other, not informing ourselves, not educating ourselves. And that is something that we need to really make sure that we don't allow people to do that, we don't allow people to really dictate what's going to happen with our families. And that's my story.
I'm hearing a recurring theme here. I'm hearing a theme that says, "Children are removed for reasons that are not necessary." I'm hearing money being spent on everyone except their children. I'm hearing medication. I'm hearing people not being addressed. I'm hearing a lot of things on this panel. It sounds like ACS is not doing a wonderful job. It sounds like the child welfare system needs to be turned upside down. Are we going to turn it upside down, guys?
Yeah.
Are we going to turn it upside down? So, next, I'm going to bring Sandra, because I think Sylvia has said everything, and we're going to move forward, and I'm going to bring Sandra Collette up, the Executive Director of Child Welfare Organizing Project, who will introduce our last panelist, Rolando Beany.
So, Rolando Beany is one of our, I would say, one of our coalition builders. He's been around a long time in the work of child welfare. He is the Executive Director of Parents in Action. He's also a parent that was affected by the child welfare system, and I'd like to say that Rolando will tell you what his specialty... And I'd like to say that Rolando will tell you what his specialty is. But I'd like him to say that Rolando's specialty is following that money, man. I tell you, Rolando keeps us on target when we're talking about what happens in child welfare at ACS and how psychotropic drugs drives the system, how having children in care for longer than they need to be is a money giver-taker drives the system. And so with that being said, I will introduce you to Rolando Beany.
It's an honor to be here, thank you for having invited me. I am a Latino immigrant, and I am a very opinionated person. So if I don't agree, I'm sorry if I offend anybody. I sincerely believe that the present child welfare system is perverse, that it does more harm than good, that it's not an accident. It's one of the many mechanisms of population control and social control established here in New York City to keep people of color down. It's working perfectly for what it has been designed to do. But I do not blame the workers doing their job, they're doing their job. They have set a system where most of the people working at the bottom are not bad people. Just a cross-section of the population. Some of them may be apple apples, some of them are very good. The majority are just, what they say, doing the job, hurting their own communities in exchange for a survival salary. Most people in New York City are two checks away from being homeless. So how do I discover this? I came long ago, because I'm still in shape, but I'm very young. And I had no idea much about ACS, Child Protective Services, foster care. If somebody had told me what I found out through my own painful experience, I would have said, "You're either lying or exaggerating." But it's true, it's a perverse system that does more harm than good. And I'm going to be honest, maybe, maybe some of you not agree. But if ACS would not exist, the children would be better off in New York City. Yes, there are some parents that are abusive, but in order to save one child, you cannot destroy a thousand. You need to be cause effective, and it does more harm than good. Now, in the year 2000, January 20 exactly, that's 15 years ago, I took my son one day to public school, he was seven years old. And when my wife went to pick him up about 3:00 PM, he wasn't there. He had been kidnapped, and I use the word properly, he had been kidnapped by ACS from the classroom under one of the most ridiculous excuses I found out, that I had failed to provide him with an eye sight test. The school had asked me for an eye sight test. They were fishing, maybe he needed special needs, they wanted to put him in special needs, I refused. So I had him go to a clinic there in Junction Boulevard. And he still has perfect eye sight. I gave the copy to the teacher, I probably suspect they misplaced it. But there were other dynamics. First, they wanted to put my son in special needs, I refused. My son needed to learn English, because we only spoke Spanish at home, so that's the first thing. The second thing is, 5% of the parents happened to be white. And I have nothing against white people, because my father's Italian, born in Italy. I speak Italian fluently. And the 5% were controlling the school. 50% Latino, 25% Bengali from Bangladesh, 20% African-American, and the 5% had been playing musical chairs at the PTA board for many years. So they didn't provide translation to Spanish, which was the majority, or to the Bengalis. So on the first two PTA meetings, big parents would never come back, because there was no participation. So I tried to fix that, so I tried to start organizing the parents. And I have a series of wrong ins with the PTA board. The last one, they say that they were going to complain to the principal, say, "I don't care, I don't work for the principal." But big mistake, because I was sending my son to public school, and the next day, my son was kidnapped. It took me five and a half months to recuperate my son. They blamed the school, they withdrew the petition, which is unusual. They recognized they had made a mistake based on the false allegations of the school. I decided not to sue ACS, which I could have done, because I realized how powerful and evil they could be. About a month before the last court date, I had 17 hearings in five and a half months. But a month before, I mean, four and a half months into the process, I got a call from the secretary of the ACS commissioner, then Mr. William Bell, Wilma Brown. She's retired now from ACS. And she told me, "Mr. Beany, we have investigated everything and the allegations are unfounded." Great, I says, "I'm going to get back my son." "Wait a minute," she tells me, "you need to meet two conditions. First, you need to sign an agreement that you're never going to, you're not going to sue us. And then you need to let us supervise you for a year." And I said, "Over my dead body, because I cannot be guilty and innocent at the same time. You're never going to see your child." So those 30 days to the next court date that I was, I had already in the calendar, were the most painful time of my life, because I love my son more than my own life. But I couldn't go and plead guilty to something I had done, had not done. And I had the pressure of my mother, my wife, my sister, my attorney, and every friend, every person who knew about the case would tell me, "Sign and get your child back." So I wasn't going to sign, but the day that I went to court, I went with a very heavy heart. And I was extremely happily surprised when ACS announced they were withdrawing the petition. My son was returned to me that same day with no conditions. It's an experience I don't wish on anybody. It's a system that harms children for no valid reason. It's a money-making machine. Not only that, but I think there is a lot of violations of the law. And that's where I want to go, because I've been doing research. My theory, whoever controls New York City controls the United States. The power is here, the money centers, the mainstream media, here is the power. Washington DC are mostly the dirty politicians. Most of them have some dirty laundry in their closet. And if they ever get off the scent, they bring them down. The power is here. Whoever controls New York City controls the United States. Whoever controls the United States controls more than half of the planet. We have about 900 military bases in 135 countries. So the control for this city is very crucial. If we, Black and Latinos, were living in another city far away, there would be less pressure. But the people who control this city are making sure that their children, their grandchildren, and their great-grandchildren, create the power and the privilege. So the best way, because we do have the numbers to rule the city, but we don't have the political or economic power. So they are making sure that most of our children get steer toward the social cancers of the prison industry, the mental industry, and the homeless industry. Those are ever-growing industries. So we need to redirect the equation. First, public school is designed to dumb down the masses to serve their masters. So don't send your children to public school, please. When I got my son back, I moved to a different address, I still received my mail in the old address, and I live like underground. And my said no son was home schooled, which is a most beautiful experience, because home schoolers are the cream of the crop. Not only they dumb down the masses in home school, with the exception of the eight specialized high schools, which is very hard for Black and Latinos to get in those schools. But basically, they teach disrespect toward the parents, and they try to convert our own children into smities against the parents to destroy the family. They take away the power of parents to discipline the children. So it is part of the mechanism, and you have a losing battle. Because between public school and television, video games, you cannot win this battle. You cannot win it, because the whole environment is to turn the children against you, to take... Most, we teach, our organization teaches classes, Parenting Steals Anger Men, Domestic Violence, recognized by ACS, by Family Court, and Criminal Court. But what I hear from the parents is, most of the children, not our children, of course, but most of the children, if they finish high school, if, they are totally lazy, disrespectful, ungrateful parasites. Very disrespectful of their parents, they don't know nothing of value to survive. They are experts in the private life of the so-called stars and celebrities. They cannot survive, either they get into some dirty business, or they need to prostitute themselves.
So Rolando, can you bring it back for us? And all of it, right? We believe all of it makes a whole lot of sense. And we know that a lot of it is linked to the very system that we're talking about, right? But we want to bring it back specifically to what's going on in child welfare. Because I think we laid the foundation about what the tie-in is to all of the system, right? So we know that for people of color, and I have to keep saying that, because people of color are the ones who are disproportionately represented across the board in all systems. So we know that there is a direct link. Can you talk to us about psychotropic medication of children in the system?
Right. The system is perfect. I mean, these people are geniuses, but Nicholson versus Escopeta. Nicholson was the victim of domestic violence. And so basically, we had the ACS commissioner, Mr. Escopeta, testify on the stand. And I was there, saying that originally ACS had gone to court to ask the judges for court, to take away children. But the Family Court judges had told them, "You don't need to do that, you're just doing fine, keep what you're doing." So you have two groups of people who are promoting breaking the law, the Family Court judges and ACS. And basically, according to the statistics, if you see... I want to ask a question, what do you think will be a fair percentage of emergency removals? And according to the court decision, an emergency removal could be only if the ACS think that the child is going to die in the next 24 hours. Otherwise, they need to go to court. I would say it's 5%. But we could see that it has gone up to 84 and change percent. That's totally a disregard of the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. So ACS is violating the law, and you can find this on the website. There is something that is called the flash report on ACS website. I'm going to encourage everybody to go there and get it, download it, and you can see the statistics. Just November of last year, they took, the percentages were 50, 50, more than 50%. 50.5% of all children were taken away without a quarter. That's totally a violation of the law. Not only that, but if you do it, I am trying to tabulate, I haven't done it yet totally, but it goes with the media. When a child dies, and the mainstream media publishes on the front page, immediately, the removal of children without quarter spikes. And that's totally unfair. And children who are even taken away, 40% of them are returned to their parents. But the psychological trauma, who is going to undo that?
Right, so it's already done. So part of the program, when we talked about, you know, policies in place, right? So there are policies in place, they're in place that says, "You should not remove." You shouldn't, unless there's imminent, right? But it still happens. So when we talk about policies, like who's enforcing them, who are they accountable to? Because we do know, don't get it misunderstood. We understand that there are some policies that are good, and we understand that there are some policies that are not. We understand also that there are policies that are not being enforced. And those could be some of the good ones, right? And that's one of the good ones, because we know as soon as you sever that relationship, that child from their parent, you've already done harm. I don't care if it's for 24 hours or if it's for three years, right? You've already begun that process. So we're saying that if you absolutely must, then you absolutely must. But we know that the percentages are not absolutely must percentages. So if you all are open to it, we'd like to open it up so that individuals can ask you questions. If you want to do that, it's totally up to you. This is you, this is your story. Okay, so there you have it, Ms. Willis.
Deshaun, so how was your relationship with the woman you adopted caring? How was your relationship with her?
For the most part, it was good. The older I got, the more rocky it got, because I'm getting older, and at this point, it's like I'm wondering what my mom is like. And then arguing with this person, it's like, "I know you're my mom, but you're not really my mom, but you're my mom." So after a while, it just becomes a toxic situation. I decided I'm going to remove myself from my mom right now.
So Ms. Janelle, are you bitter, are you angry with the woman who's taking care of your child? I mean, she could have been probably misguided, threw gun, and was told lies old enough to adopt your son. Are you angry with her, or do you have a relationship with her?
I'm not angry or bitter. I do know from speaking to my son that she had 22 foster children prior to him. And when he came, he was the last one. She had already had daughters already, so evidently she wanted a son. That was the end of her fostering. And she gave her up to a little boy herself five years later. So she is, she has always, according to him, she's always had a problem with me. She was told that I was a crackhead, she was told, which was completely false. I have family and friends who were there after the pregnancy. She was told that I was a crackhead, I didn't want my kid. I don't know what her issue is with me, I really don't care. Because at the end of the day, I didn't ask her to take my child. Nobody in my family requested her assistance, nor did we need her assistance. So therefore, her opinion matters to me not. What matters to me is the health and well-being of my son. When I met him, I spoke to her immediately, and I thanked her for raising my son healthy and educated. And that's the best I can do, I appreciate that.
He does have his fair share of mental health issues from dealing with this, but that's something for us to work on.
Yeah, I mean, the agency does a lot of things, and they manipulate people, and they lie to get them to do what they want them to do. So a lot of her issues, whatever she had towards you, was basically of the lies that she has been told during the time of taking in your child. That's all.
I have a question, but how do you feel in general from your true name, from the...
I always do my name. And that was part of it that made it a little weird too, because I was with this family from nine days old. This woman, who I know is my mother, I know really isn't my mother. You know what I'm saying? And I know that my name is Deshaun Bramwell, but my name is Deshaun Tyree Johnson. It kind of makes you question your identity a little bit, it makes it a little hard to really know you when you grow up like that.
Were any of your children old enough? Because you said that they were taken from you six times and then given back, right? So there's a time period where children might have that, as Sandra said, that separation of the trauma or just being angry for not being home. Were any of them old enough to kind of express to you like what happened or the uncomfortability of that whole process, or were they still...
My 12-year-old, he's the one that was removed the most. And to this day, we are working on our relationships. And it's rough, it's work. A lot of times, each time, most of the times when he was removed, he went to stay with his godmother. And he doesn't know his mom at all. And that's something, I tried to put her in white, and that was the reason for they kept him removed. He was upset at me behind the scenes, but we're working, both he and I were.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I have a question for Mr. Bryant and Ms. St. Louis. You said you worked for ACS at one time.
Yep.
Has it ever had like any effect on you? Like, because like you said, like how they, you have to kind of like fabricate stuff to take a child out of home. So like today, does that, do you look back, does that have like any kind of like, would you say where it did it, you know, affect you, like knowing that you really shouldn't have done this, but you did it because, quote unquote, you had to go along just to get a check or something?
Some of it gave me nightmares. But I can remember one time, I was working, I had a case. Young lady, she was just about 21. She had a little job at McDonald's, she was going to school. She was going to school and they were trying to age her out, you know, just push her out of the system. And it was like I had a flashback of being in care. Because I didn't have any independent living. And my first job, when I worked foster care, I worked independent living. And I went berserk on the agency. I get written up. I read up. I got reprimanded. But if, I know what I did. And I try now to do better.
And for Mr. Smee?
Yes.
I would like to find out, of course, like a lot of times when children are placed in foster care and like Sandra spoke about it and others have spoke about it as well, just that separation, like I'm just gonna reiterate that, but just once you're separated from your birth pattern, you, that child becomes special needs. Now, a lot of times, with foster pattern, they try to work with the agency or act that, let the agency know that the child needs special needs. But agency is like, "No, no, no." Because they, because if, if the child is considered a special needs child, which they all are, once they're, you know, separated from their birth pattern, right there, that's, that's, that starts, you know, your opening the can runs up again. But on that same token, when you have that foster child in your home and then the agency won't allow people out and see a private psychologist, everything is done within the agency, the agency. So how is that whereas the foster parent is getting extra money and, you know, child welfare is getting extra money, stay or whatever is getting extra money? But then, sometimes they'll remove the child out of that home before that 18 months is up, just so that foster parent cannot get that special needs check?
My son was never actually became a special needs. They wanted to do it. They, I was very lucky, very proactive. I found out where they were planning to take my son for the evaluation. So I went there and interviewed everybody, all the counselors, and I convinced them. So when, when they came, my son was brought there eventually. They didn't recommend, but they did, they insisted. Then they said that my son had a big head and they thought he had some type of brain problem. So they were planning to bring him to a neurologist and I had to find out who was the neurologist. And I went there with my brother and we brought pictures of my, my father who had a big head. So it seems to be a family problem, not something that, so, but it was a battle. But when my son was returned in the courts, the day that the, the ACS attorney and the lawyer, Nicholson versus Escopeta. Nicholson was the victim of domestic violence. So basically, we had the ACS commissioner, Mr. Escopeta testify on the stand and I was there, saying that originally ACS had gone to court to, to, to ask the judges for courts to take away children. But the family court judges had told them, "You don't need to do that. You're just doing fine, keep what you're doing." So you have two groups of people who are promoting breaking the law, the family court judges and ACS. And basically, according to the statistics, if you see, I, I wanna ask a question. What do you think will be a fair percentage of emergency removals? And according to the court decision, an emergency removal could be only, see if the ACS thinks that the child is gonna die in the next 24 hours, otherwise they need to go to court. I would say it's 5%. But we can see that it, that it has gone up to 40, 40, 84 and change percent. That's totally disregard of the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. So ACS is violating the law and you can find this on the website. There is something that is called the flash report on ACS website. I'm gonna encourage everybody to go there and get it, download it, and you can see the statistics. Just November of last year, they took the percentages, but 50, 50, more than 50%, 50.5% of all children were taken away without a quarter. That's totally a violation of the law. Not only that, but if you do it, I am trying to tabulate, I haven't done it yet totally, but it goes with the media. When a child dies and the mainstream media publishes on the front page, immediately, the removal of children without quarter is spikes and, and that's totally unfair. And children who are even taken away, 40% of them are returned to the parents, but the psychological trauma, who is gonna undo that?
Right. So, so it's, it's already done. So part of the, the program, when we talked about, you know, policies in place, right? So there are policies in place, they're in place that says, "You should not remove. You shouldn't, unless there's imminent," right? But it still happens. So when we talk about policies, like who's enforcing them? Who are they accountable to? Because we do know, don't, don't, don't get it misunderstood. We understand that there are some policies that are good and we understand that there are some policies that are not. We understand also that there are policies that are not being enforced. And those could be some of the good ones, right? And that's one of the good ones because we know as soon as you sever that relationship, that child from their parent, you've already done harm. I don't care if it's for 24 hours or if it's for three years, right? You've already begun that process. So we're saying that if you absolutely must, then you absolutely must. But we know that the percentages are not absolutely must percentages. So if you all are, are open to it, we'd like to open it up so that individuals can ask you questions. If you want to do that, it's totally up to you. This is you, this is your story.
Okay, so there you have it, Ms. Willis.
DeShawn, so how was your relationship with the woman you adopted, Carrie? How was your relationship with her?
For the most part, it was good. The older I got, the more rocky it got because I'm getting older and at this point, it's like I'm wondering what my mom is like and then arguing with this person, it's like, "I know you're my mom, but you're not really my mom, but you're my mom." So after a while, it just becomes a toxic situation. I decided I'm gonna remove myself from the phone right now.
So Ms. Janelle, are you bitter or are you angry with the woman who taking care of your child? I mean, she could have been probably misguided through them and was sold lies, bought enough to adopt your son. Are you angry with her or do you have a relationship with her?
I'm not angry or bitter. I do know from speaking to my son that she had 22 foster children prior to him. And when he came, he was the last one. She had already had daughters already. So evidently, she wanted a son. That was the end of her fostering. And she gave her up to a little boy herself, five years later. So she is, she has always, according to him, she's always had a problem with me. She was told that I was a crackhead. She was told, which was completely false. I have family and friends who were there after the pregnancy. She was told that I was a crackhead, I didn't want my, my kid. I don't know what her issue is with me. I really don't care. Because at the end of the day, I didn't ask her to take my child. Nobody in my family requested her assistance, nor did we need her assistance. So therefore, her opinion matters to me not. What matters to me is the health and well-being of my son. When I met him, I spoke to her immediately and I thanked her for raising my son healthy and educated. And that's the best I can do. I appreciate that. He does have his fair share of mental health issues from dealing with this, but that's something for us to work on.
Yeah, I mean, the, the agency does a lot of things and they manipulate people and they lie to get them to do what they want them to do. So a lot of her issues, whatever she had towards you, was basically of the lies that she has been told during the time of taking in your child. That's all.
I have a question, but how do you feel, DeShawn, when you found your true name from your blood?
I always do my name. And that was part of it that made it a little weird too because I was with this family from nine days old. This woman, who I know is my mother, I know really isn't my mother. You get what I'm saying? And I know that my name is DeShawn Bramwell, but my name is DeShawn Tyree Johnson. It kinda, it kinda makes you question their identity a little bit. It makes it a little hard to really know you when you grow up like that.
Were any of your children old enough? Because you said that they were, they were taken from you six times and then given back, right? So there's a time period where children might have that, as Sandra said, that separation of the trauma or just, just being angry for not being home. Were any of them old enough to kind of express to you like what happened or the uncomfortability of that whole process? What was the impact?
My 12-year-old, he's the one that was removed the most. And to this day, we are working on our relationship. And it's rough, it's work. A lot of times, each time, most of the times when they were, when he was removed, he went to stay with his godmother. And he doesn't know his mom at all. And that's, I tried to put her in his life and that was the reason for they kept him removed. He's upset at me behind the scenes move, but we're working, both he and I were.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I have a question for Mr. Pratt and Mr. Smee. You said you worked for ACS at one time. Has it ever had like any effect on you like, because like you said, like how they, you have to kind of like fabricate stuff to take a child out of the home? So like today, does that, do you look back, does that have like any kind of like, would you say where, did it, you know, affect you like knowing that you really shouldn't have done this, but you did it because quote unquote, you had to go along just to get a check or something?
Some of it gave me nightmares. But I can remember one time, I was working, I had a case. Young lady, she was just about 21. She had a little job in McDonald's. She was going to school and they were trying to age her out, you know, just push her out of the system. And it was like I had a flashback of being in care. Because I didn't have any independent living. And my first job, when I worked foster care, I worked independent living. And I went berserk on the agency. I get written up. I read up. I got reprimanded. But if, I know what I did. And I try now to do better.
And for Mr. Smee?
Yes.
I would like to find out, of course, like a lot of times when children are placed in foster care and like Sandra spoke about it and others have spoke about it as well, just that separation, like I'm just gonna reiterate that, but just once you're separated from your birth pattern, you, that child becomes special needs. Now, a lot of times, with foster pattern, they try to work with the agency or act that, let the agency know that the child needs special needs. But agency is like, "No, no, no." Because they, because if, if the child is considered a special needs child, which they all are, once they're, you know, separated from their birth pattern, right there, that's, that's, that starts, you know, your opening the can runs up again. But on that same token, when you have that foster child in your home and then the agency won't allow people out and see a private psychologist, everything is done within the agency, the agency. So how is that whereas the foster parent is getting extra money and, you know, child welfare is getting extra money, stay or whatever is getting extra money? But then, sometimes they'll remove the child out of that home before that 18 months is up, just so that foster parent cannot get that special needs check?
My son was never actually became a special needs. They wanted to do it. They, I was very lucky, very proactive. I found out where they were planning to take my son for the evaluation. So I went there and interviewed everybody, all the, all the counselors, and I convinced them. So when, when they came, my son was brought there eventually. They didn't recommend, but they did, they insisted. Then they said that my son had a big head and they thought he had some type of brain problem. So they were planning to bring him to a neurologist and I had to find out who was the neurologist. And I went there with my brother and we brought pictures of my, my father who had a big head. So it seems to be a family problem, not something that, so, but it was a battle. But when my son was returned in the courts, the day that the, the ACS attorney and the lawyer...
I just didn't care. Why? Because I didn't have my kids. But when I was able to see and be with my children, that was more motivation to work harder. So I believe there are more programs put in place for the youth that are in care can prevent a whole cycle like mine that spans 20 years. Thank you.
I believe that if a child is gonna be adopted, at some point, we should be given a trial period without biologic of the family. Because at 18, it's hard to work on the man that I want to be when I don't know where I come from. I don't know why I act like this or why, why I get, I have certain tendencies or what diseases run in my family or pretty much what to expect as far as genetically. I think five, six years old is the perfect age because kids telling their parents to start realizing it. "Mommy, daddy smell like pine cones and he bugging, he gonna feed me." They'll tell. We just need a chance. I, I didn't see my mother from when I was 18 months to when I was 18 years old. That's not fair at all. I had a good adoptive mother, but still, I grew on her uterus and I didn't know what she looked like most of my life. So I just think that needs to change.
You said something that, to this day, every day, I go to, I go to the doctor every three months to go to check up. But I don't know biologically, and I understand that. But the money and the resources that are just spent by the system to keep kids in foster care, if some of that just could be put back in the community. I'm a single dad. I got a five-year-old, a nine-year-old, and a 12-year-old, three boys. And I'm doing my best to take care of them. Every weekend, I try to just take time. Like Ronaldo said, take time. It takes time. That's why I'm trying to do the healing process. I take my kids out every weekend. I, I don't have money. But I know the first Friday of the month, they got the New York Children's Museum. Thursdays, they got the Brooklyn Children's Museum. And I do stuff like that. I'll take them to the planetarium. I'll take them to, I'm, I'm on the internet all the time. I'm, I'm thank God for the internet. At least I was able to get a computer so I could look stuff up. If I could just do that with my kids and keep doing that, if they had the money, you know, give sometimes just give free, free tickets to the circus sometimes or to the botanical garden, that would be beautiful.
So this is, this is our call to action. We're gonna ask you, one, you were given surveys. We're gonna ask you to please complete them and leave them with us. And, and I'm gonna say we are...